And then I come to the meeting. Can't nobody.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call this meeting in order. Mr. Wilder leaves a prayer and Mr. Jackson leaves a page.
Y'all would bow with us. Oh dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this meeting, the privileges we have in this country to have our public hearings and govern our own affairs. We ask that you look over this this evening, help guide us. Uh, we thank you for all of our law enforcement and fire department that protects this people, this county. We thank you for this crowd here tonight and ask that you give them all a safe journey home from our meeting tonight. All these things in Jesus's name we ask. Amen.
Excellent.
The flag of the United States of America, through the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like a motion for approval of events of the previous meeting, please.
The move.
Second.
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Like approval of the agenda of this meeting?
The move.
Second.
All in favor? Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to read a statement to you before we begin. Take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommended body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning of various requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on April eighteenth of two thousand twenty-three. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Stuhler here to obtain a request form to speak. Okay. Mr. Butler.
Sheriff's request for a rezoning out at four thirty-nine Hurford Farm Road, uh, postponed back from January and February this year. Our request is going from R two to C one for office and commercial use. This location property on the north side of Hurford Farm Road. In the current zone of the property is R two, yes, R two to the, to the E or to the west, excuse me, and then C one, C one, C two to the north and also, um, south and also east. There's area view of the property. And the existing site. So when the property came in before, uh, there'd been some work done prior to some approvals happening. That's why there's been, um, a couple of, uh, postponements on this. So that's one of the reasons why it's taking a little while to come back to you. Um, just so you know, there are currently, they're, they're following through everything we asked them to do, um, on that side. So we're comfortable moving forward with the zoning at this point. There's a concept plan of the property, uh, her farm widening. We'll be acquiring basically what's shown there. Uh, we'll get rid of that house. Uh, there's existing, uh, uh, garages here. They'll be part of a variance later. And this shows the proposed development on the other property. So we're only dealing with this one, uh, this one here. Again, it shows a view from Lampkin Drive. And also sight photos again from before where there was some work done before, um, permits have been acquired. More sight photos. And more. So in terms of the zoning, uh, the future development of this is the, um, Evans Activity Center, which is a mixed-use activity center. So the rezoning to C one makes a lot of sense. Uh, it's one of those things that we had to kind of go back and reassess and, and wait for some things to happen. I do have some work being done on the property before it should have been done. Uh, but again, from a zoning standpoint, makes perfect sense to have a zone C one. Um, so due to that, uh, well, one thing too, let me back up real quick. One of the things with the acquisition of this area here. Um, there is a, a condition recommended by the, um, by traffic engineering that require this to be basically no access easement. Um, and also the, the owner has also discussed putting basically amounts of landscape buffer back there as well. So you'll essentially have all access will come through Lampkin into the site. So you won't have anything on Hurford at that point. So in, in terms of the recommendation, we are recommending approval conditions. Uh, the first one, uh, there is for the, uh, existing garage. Uh, that has to be resubmitted as a, uh, commercial project. Should, should probably be resented C one. That's currently in the works. Again, the second one I talked about with it has to be combined with adjacent, adjacent property and it will be a no access easement, uh, for that. That concludes staff recommendation.
Comments?
Just a reminder, Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, postponed, uh, public hearing, so.
Yes, sir. Anyone here that would like to speak far against this issue?
Questions if anybody has any questions.
I got any questions? Thank you. Like a motion to approve or disapprove of this item?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file R Z twenty-three dash zero one dash zero five rezoning from R two to C one at forty-three eighty-nine Hurford Farm Road.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Hey, Mr. Butler.
The next one is, uh, the companion variance on this property, uh, is due section nine, it's ninety-eight list line structures requirements, reduce building setbacks. This shows location of the property. We've seen it before, north side of Hurford Farm Road, current zoning, which is R two, also area view of the property. And the existing site. Lot of the property. So one of the things with this, uh, so when, when it is rezoned into, into C one, this will be brought into the Evans Town Center, Overly District. Which has a maximum one hundred twenty-five foot setback from the center line of, of Hurford Farm Road. Um, that will not be able to be met with this acquisition of land, uh, as part of that widening. Uh, it would put it basically, I think it's two, two feet in, um, in order to meet that. So we are waiving that requirement of the maximum setback. The other issue that's more, more pressing at the moment is the garage that's there. Um, it is about three feet from the property line. Um, and again, it is large enough or, excuse me, it's about, um, it's two feet. Anyway, it doesn't mean building setbacks currently. So do, that we're okay with that garage staying in place there. Um, and one of the things with that, we do have a condition, or excuse me, this shows a garage location. And then we do have a condition, the variance applies to existing garage structure, uh, need replacement of existing structures, development of future structures will require to meet the building setbacks. That concludes staff recommendation.
Any discussion concerning the variances? And is anybody who would like to speak far against this issue? Questions?
Questions?
Alright, thank you. Same emotion to accept or deny these variances?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA twenty-three dash zero one zero two variance, reduce the building setbacks at forty-three eighty-nine Hurford Farm Road.
Second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Mr. Butler.
So this next one is a request for a rezoning, uh, from R three to P one, thirty-five thirty-five Stardust Drive. This is post, are postponed from our last meeting on March second. Uh, rezoning the P ones for proposed child, near, near behavioral center for health and wellness. Location of the property on the north side of Stardust Drive. Again, the current zoning, property here is zone P one, um, and the, the use is already there. This is essentially a, an expansion of that use. It has, yes, a P one on the other side of the road, other side of the street of Stardust, and but everything else around it is R three. The area view of the property. Also existing site. And the plot of the property. This is the original plan that we saw two weeks ago. Uh, one of the things from that, um, we did have a condition that asked for them to put in ten parking spaces, which, which will be the maximum required under our code. Uh, so this is the original that we've seen. They've now come back and revised it, uh, to show the ten parking spaces you can see on the, uh, north and east side there. Uh, they, they were able to do that by, by making the addition that, uh, so a little bit smaller. And they also did a note, or added a note, the existing driveway will be removed. Um, that was a comment, uh, from traffic engineering. So they're showing us that, you know, they can meet that, those, that, that condition, um, as, as drawn. One of the things previously, um, there was some concern about traffic on, or parking on, on, on Stardust Road. Um, this is one of those things that it's, it's going to be able to provide more parking. It may not, we cannot, you know, confirm it'll solve the issue perhaps. That's one of the issues that may come up with it. Um, in terms of the overall design of it, this is how you would want to do, uh, P one that goes into a neighborhood. Uh, we do have a variance request coming up next for this, the, uh, the buffer there. But again, they're doing it with true good pavers, which are, uh, basically a grass paver, essentially it looks like a, a yard, uh, in some respects. Um, so it's, it's one of those things that's very low impact, uh, that are keeping the existing residents and also having a small addition on the back. But it's, it's, it's one of those things that if you were to do this, this is kind of how you would go about doing it. Uh, so we do have a, oh, let me go, go on, on the, uh, future land use map. It shows existing parking on the site. And also future level map. Uh, one of the things with this, uh, we are comfortable with it really only due to the location of this P one next door and also how they're going about doing it. Um, it's again, low impact and kind of how you want to do this to bring this kind of type of use into a neighborhood. So due to those factors, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. And again, we are keeping that condition in place with the ten spaces. And also one regarding the replacement of existing residents, uh, if it is, let's say it burns down or something, uh, that has to make it compatible with surrounding neighborhood to maintain that residential look. It's not, it's not going to be looking like something you'd see in a, you know, an office park perhaps. Um, again, to kind of main, to maintain that, that look and feel for the neighborhood. That concludes staff recommendation.
Ladies and, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to give each side an opportunity to address this issue like we did before. So, uh, probably would be as well for the folks that have made the changes to come forward first and discuss the changes right quick for me, please.
Appreciate it.
Wilson Hanes, attorney for the applicants. See where the property is located, but all they're trying to do is just to expand into the property behind them to give them a little more room to work. Uh, as Mr. Butler's pointed out, uh, this is Dr. Anderson, here, here with me. Um, the idea is to maintain the existing residential look, field of this property. They're doing this so that anyone driving past the property would think it's still just another house. Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna look better. It looks now because it's gonna get painted. There'd be additional landscaping. There won't be any signs out front. There won't be anybody coming in and out the front door. That's going to be a, an emergency exit only. Uh, the impact will be minimal. Uh, as far as impact to the neighborhood, we're, we're, you know, some, some of the, some of the concerns of the neighbors that have been expressed to us, and I think to this panel, and I'm sure you'll hear again today. Was they're concerned about existing parking in traffic conditions. They, uh, the existing parking is simply not adequate where they are now. They're going to add ten parking spaces in the back. They're not adding any more staff. They're not expecting much in the way of patient increase, maybe one to two more patients a day. What they're really going to be able to do is provide longer patients services. They'll be there longer, but they won't be more frequent. The, um, existing traffic problems are not going to get any better unless they're able to do something like what we're trying to do here. We can't think of anything else you could do other than increased parking, which again, those ten spaces behind will, I don't know if it's going to completely solve the existing, it's certainly not going to make it any worse and, uh, should make it better. Uh, I think one of the things that happens is people coming in during the day don't have a place to park while they're waiting to discharge their children. The people who receive services here are primarily, uh, grammar school and, and adolescent children who are getting neuro behavioral services. This, this facility is a great asset to the, to Columbia County in this area. They're one of the only places that provide this there. The only place that provides much of the services they provide. They get patients from, uh, the, the children that I mentioned, uh, they also treat, uh, servicemen who are coming back, um, service, uh, under a federal, under a, a nonprofit organization. Uh, they have a couple of those that they're, that are there all the time. They also get referrals from counties, uh, there's in the judicial system that, uh, send them there, uh, for, I don't think so much Columbia County. But, uh, some of the underserved coun- counties in the area. Again, this facility is, 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 is an asset to Columbia County. The extension, the expansion that we're asking for is going to have, I think, a positive impact on the neighborhood, not a negative impact. The, um, and again, for those who are involved, who are concerned about this, one of the other concerns is, well, what's going to come next? Uh, I heard people say that there were, there's going to be a gas station or a strip joint or something like that coming in after this one. Uh, well, that commission's not going to let that happen. We've got this provision in the, in the restrictions or in the conditions that we'll mention a minute ago, that if it, if the bu- building ever comes down, it's got to be replaced with something that looks like it. So their intention is it's not going to ever look like a doctor's office. It's going to look like a house. And it's intended to stay that way. You know, what happens a hundred years from now? I have no idea. But for the foreseeable time, that is the plan. And they are very conscious about that. Uh, one of the other things that hasn't come up, but it, it, it may, the, the next door neighbor, um, in the back. You know, the existing plan calls for that privacy fence and then some shrubbery and so forth. If there's something more that we can provide back there to make them more comfortable, we'll do it. A better fence or more shrubbery or more trees, what, whatever would make the, because we're more concerned about the next door neighbor really than, uh, because the front's taken care of. But, you know, somebody's got to live next door to it. So if she has, they have a problem with that, we can do everything that we can. We can't make it any wider. We don't have room. But we can make it thicker or higher or better or whatever. We'll, we'll make them feel better. But again, I think the biggest problem, the, the biggest complaints were the traffic. And that is going to be attenuated at least to some degree by these additional park, by this additional parking. Is there anything you'd like to ask us or?
Question.
Dr. Anderson. Okay, uh, y'all I believe have a copy of a petition that we circulated around the neighborhood showing that, uh, twelve of the neighbors had, um, consented to this or, or at least are in favor of, of the expansion. I know there's some neighbors that have concerns and, and we, we understand that. And we want to address them as any way that we can to make this work out.
Thank you for your time, sir.
And we have a couple of neighbors, I think, that are here speaking supportive, they'd like to.
Alright, sir. Said you had a neighbor that wanted to speak?
Hi, my name's Amy. I'm not a neighbor, but we are a patient. We've been with Dr. Gengarosa for, um, I think, five years since two thousand and eighteen. We have, we've been part of that parent struggle where we come to get services and our son has been there. His, his service is an hour long, twice a week, and we are part of the parent struggle that doesn't have a place to park. So you're kind of jockeying for positions. Um, sometimes I have seen other parents where they have had to park further down the road or we have to go across the street somewhere else. It's just, you just don't have a place to sit and wait for your, their child. Because the services aren't where we are in the room with them during the, their procedures. Um, so for me, having this extra parking space would, as a patient, relieve that congestion that's on the side of the road, because there have been many times where I've had to park illegally behind another set of parents waiting for them to come out. And as soon as they come out, I can jockey into the, the spot. So having these ten extra spots would take parents off the street, which then makes it safer for everybody, neighbors, patients, children. Because not all the children are capable of coming out on their own. They need to be walked out with a parent or staff for their safety issues. So being able to park in the back is also an increased safety issue for us because your, your children's more protective. Um, Dr. Gengarosa's office has expanded in so much as far as the services she's able to provide for our families. When we started, it was just speech and narrow feedback, and now we're able to continue with speech and occupational therapies and the narrow feedback. And we've seen tremendous growth in our son. So her program has a huge waitlist. And the fact that she's one of the only providers in town, you can't get in. It's, it's hard. So being able to have the space for patients to be able to park and have this extra space for her to be able to do the practices in that building would be a huge asset to Columbia County because no one else has it.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Now it's your turn.
I, I think it's interesting.
Kevin, hold on just a minute. She's, ma'am. You're interrupting the meeting, ma'am. You would come to the microphone either. Have a seat. Thank you. Now you go.
I didn't bring my same thing that I brought last time because I assume you still have a copy. I think it's interesting that who they brought today is somebody who's very close to me. Just he, he actually works with me at the school and they're in my Sunday school class. So I just find that extremely interesting. And like I said, I'm, I'm totally, I know the work they do is good at that place. I have no doubt. They stay right where they're at. I don't have any issue with that. I've told you, I've been there. They've been doing it for a decade. I've never so much as called anyone at Columbia County. I've never called the police. I've called them once or twice, but not even have been a nice pest to them to call. And I, you know, I didn't want to have to get into habit of counting how many cars are at this place every day. And we haven't heard anything for the two weeks since we postponed it. And I didn't expect to so much, but I didn't know there was a change or revision in anything. But I would count on more than three days since the last meeting. There was twelve cars there. I don't imagine those all belong to patients. I imagine they belong to staff. So if the addition is seven parking places or ten, and like I mentioned, with who they have on their roster as employees or as doctors or psychologists, they couldn't have a meeting. They could not have a staff meeting. The traffic continues the same. They still have five cars crammed into one little spot, which I assume is their staff. Those aren't patients. Those aren't the, you know, they're not the ones that are clogged up those spaces. These spaces will just accommodate their staff. And I mentioned too, there was an article in the gust chronicle from when they started and there was a hundred patients then. I can't believe that they still only have a hundred patients between that many physi- doctors or psychologists. And I, like I said, I don't want to get into keeping their counter or their calendar or maintaining what they're doing. I simply don't want that in the neighborhood. I want my neighborhood to stay a neighborhood. I live two houses down. My neighbors here are directly next to them. I, I know that there's even a question to change the variance of the buffers. I don't want to encounter all that. I plan to spend the rest of my life there. My husband grew up on that street. He's been there since the eighties. My mother-in-law has lived there. There's many of our family that lives around the corner and we've been there for decades. Being good taxpaying citizens, doing what we're supposed to, not being a nuisance, not calling code enforcement every day. And I've experienced that enough in the business I'm in and know how that works. I simply don't want a professional zone property in my neighborhood. I think you can try and do everything you want to maintain a residential image, but you won't. That, I mean, Dr. Gengarosa won't be there forever. You won't.
Excuse me if I interrupt him, but you do realize what's there is going to stay there.
What, what's that? I do.
Today.
What the, what's zone professional now? Yes. I, I, it can sta- I'm not opposing that at all. I just don't want it to move down the street. I don't.
And I apologize. My point was not to do anything to him. My point was just to say what she's saying, that it was just imposing on our neighborhood. The property towards Bastin Road, we are great. We are fine with.
All of us have been driven down that electric. We're aware of everybody.
Seems to me that it would improve the parking issue.
Making a.
Prove there won't be road, that many cars on the road.
But I, to make my point clear, even if it did, I don't want the property zoned professional because I don't want that in my neighborhood. I'm just saying, hey, here's all the problems they already have.
Like so, I've spent probably three, I've done, been over there at least three or four times, maybe five even. And sat there and watched traffic because, because of what you said, like, and what you said about people flying through the neighborhood and things like that. Honestly, I didn't, I never saw it. Now, I'm not sitting there for eight hours a day.
Right.
Obviously, I've got, I've got other things I've got to be doing too, but, um, I did see parking in the street. That, that seems to be the biggest issue, uh, that we saw. I had to look up what they're going to use for pavers. I had to look that up. Had no idea. Never even heard of them. Um, pretty cool concept. Everybody, everyone that I saw coming in was going off Ba- came in off Bastin Road. And, and, and actually the, you know, initially why we postponed this was exactly the reason you just said. It intruding into the neighborhood. I don't know. We, we've all been talking, you know, talked about how many times, like tonight, we just said how many times. I didn't even realize these, these guys have been down there. Um, and looked at it. So, um, I don't know. I'm, I'm still kind of up in the air about which way this is going to go.
Well, is it true that our neighborhood roads are not county maintained?
Oh, they're county roads.
Yeah, that's a county road.
Oh, that's county roads.
Well, see, we tried like a year ago to get speed bumps put in due to the influx of the people that didn't have parking. So they would just drive around from Rainbow to.
And you have to, you have to request that the county committee.
And they said that it wasn't a county maintained road.
No, that's not true.
Uh, there's a, there's a process that they go through.
So it's just a process that we need to encounter.
I understand, I understand what. Oh, sorry.
I'm, you go ahead.
I, 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 I understand what you're saying. I think all of us understand, but, but it's there. It's already there and, and I think if you thought about it in the sense of, uh, probably wouldn't like it to be there at all. And I, and I think I could agree with you. I wouldn't hear when that, when that happened. But it's there. And I honestly think if you could, if you thought about it, because it's there, this is better. It, it, it's probably not a hundred percent fix, which I think they've, they've honestly said that, but, but I, I think this is better. I think clear up some of what you're, what you're dealing with. Um, but, you know, like, as you said, it, it's going to be there. It's there. So it's kind of like we're having to deal with it. And no, just doesn't seem like a viable answer. It's like you don't do anything. You kind of leave yourself out to traffic congestion and wrecks and God forbid one of those kids or something like that got hurt.
But to respond to that?
Sure.
Had I been somebody calling every single day and complaining about it, would that have made a difference?
Oh, ma'am.
Because I'm not, today I'm not complaining about the parking. I'm not. I, it's part of the issue. It's definitely a circumstance.
But you're complaining about what everybody else that probably sitting here agrees with you about, but it's there. It's there already.
And yeah, at the end of the street on Bastion Road. The address is Bastion Road. Yes.
And honestly, everything you said and every reason you gave last, last meeting, I wrote down.
That was the reason for the postponement for us to get to this point where we could have an educated conversation about it. And while I'm saying that, let Mr. Sterling respond to you about the speed bumps, because he knows the issue.
Well, I, I appreciate your confidence in me. I don't know if it's early warranted, but we'll give it a shot. Uh, so yeah, sir, it is a process, as was mentioned. Um, I just happened to look it up on, uh, the county website. Um, so Stardust is, and I didn't check the other ones, but I'm assuming they're also as well. Stardust is a local road. So what you would need to do is there's a form or there's an application for speed. I think it's called the speed bumper, speed hump policy. Um, and basically what that means is, is you fill that out. Then the, the county's engineering department, whether it's traffic engineering or Rosen bridges, they will go out and do an assessment of the road itself. And, um, based on, you know, the criteria that they have set up for that, they will be able to determine whether or not, uh, it would, would actually, uh, be applicable to put in some sort of, sort of, um, speed control device, you know, whether that's a hump table, whatever the, you know, the, the method may be. Um, I did note that, um, it is a local road, so that may be part of the issue.
And when you say local road, does that mean?
There's.
A local Columbia County owned road?
These are, this, this road and I'm sure the other two in the neighborhood are county owned roads and maintained roads. So what that means is that they will then be able to make the determination if any improvements can be made in terms of traffic controls. So what you'll need to do, and we can certainly point you in the right direction, um, either af- after the meeting or if you want to call tomorrow to our offices, we can get you in touch with our engineering department and they can start you through that process. Um, I will note that it is a local road, so that may be part of the issue. Um, I know that there is certain road, uh, classifications that do not qualify, just as a matter of course. So, um, that's something that I can't speak to and our engineering department certainly can.
Because we have tried in the past.
Yeah, and I, and I.
To the influx of traffic.
Hundred percent understand.
Is there a speeding issue?
They had, well, no, they have no parking.
Because that's, that's the only.
Because that's, that's the only criteria you're gonna have.
Far Dust to Rainbow, just.
Well, so, so let me.
But we're also because of the Augusta Christian.
But the parking, but the parking is gonna be eliminated per what they just said.
Well, let me, let me, let me add a couple of, um.
Minus both.
Let me add a couple of things too. One, it is a public street, so there is not an enforcement mechanism by which the sheriff's department will be out there ticketing non-Stardust or, you know, any road name, you know. So there's gonna be that, uh, ability to do so, so keep that in mind. Um, you know, it is a connected road to other parts of the, the county, of course. So there is the ability for, you know, myself or, you know, anybody in the room to drive down that road and, and connect through. If speed is the issue, there is, uh, there's an opportunity whether there's, you know, something that is warranted, that I can't speak to. So, you know, that's our best suggestion is, is we'll get you in touch with the, uh, engineering department and, uh, get you through, started on that process and then whatever they find is, you know, what'll, what'll end up happening.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
Comments?
I, I, I want to be completely clear, I understand the parking.
You have been.
Yeah, I don't want my neighbor to be a medical office, period.
Understand that.
That, that's what I don't want. I do not want that, I think of the future and I think of everything going forward. So all those other issues are topics for me, but the root of it, the root of it is what I want my neighborhood to maintain as.
Thank you ma'am.
And I've brought all these people with me we have assigned petition to when we need to present that.
I understand, thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You present yourself very well.
I do have a question, um, Wilson. Parking for the staff, she brought up a good point, parking for the staff, does this, does this address that as well?
It does, um, because most of the staff is actually remote, or a good portion of it is, uh, you know, bookkeeping and so forth. Only, only the actual treating missions or whatever, the doctor in there are there at any particular time. They're not generally there all day, it's, uh, a lot of them are half-days and so forth, uh, just because of the nature of the, of the practice that they have. So, you know, that's 10 cars off, that, that don't have a place to park now that will have a place to park. That's, that's a significant number of cars.
How many, uh, patients normally at one time would be there?
Come to the microphone so we can get you on audio.
I'm sorry. Um, there, I did a analysis of it and there's never more than three or four cars that are supposed to be there at a time. So.
Patient cars?
Yes, patient cars on that four car pad.
So you normally don't have over three or four patients?
At a time, correct.
At one time.
How many staff cars?
Staff cars?
Depends on the day.
Yes, because some people are there only one day a week and some are two days. And two are already in the driveway on the property.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions before they sit down? Thank you very.
People that are on, the number of people that are on the sign out front. One is totally works from home, remote. Two of the OTs, two of them, they work less than halftime, even together.
But one's not gonna be there anymore.
And then the, then each pathologist is only there four days a week, she's the only one that's there five days a week.
Thank you very much.
And what are your, what are your hours?
We're there nine to six.
Monday, only Monday through Friday?
Thanks, appreciate your time. Now.
But before you vote, Mr. Ray, you said you had a petition. Can you give it to us?
We'll enter that into the record. Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve or disapprove this issue?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve a petition, file RZ 23 dash zero three dash zero one, zoning from R3 to P1 at 35, 35 Stardust Drive.
Now, second?
Second.
All in favor of this issue, raise your right hand. On opposed. Hey, let's go to the variance.
This is a request for a variance, section 98 lists lot and structure requirements, 98139 buffers and screening, reduced building setbacks and buffers at 35, 35 Stardust Drive, uh, currently zone R3 residential. Again, we just saw the property, north side Stardust Drive, this is zoning the property and also the aerial view of the site, existing site, also the plat of the property. And the overall, this is the new conceptual plan, uh, just to clarify. So what we're looking at today is a reduction in the front building setback only, no, no reductions on the side or the rear. Then a reduction in the buffer in the red area that's shown there. The buffer be going from 20 feet down to 10 feet and on the, uh, the front building setback is a reduction of only about a foot. And we could actually do that as a minor waiver, but we included it with this variance just to put them all at one time. So with the reduction in the, in the, uh, buffer there, uh, you do have a, a fence and also landscaping that will, will be provided. Uh, so again, there's no real change in the actual, what will be planted there. It's more of a, a reduction in the, the, in the depth of it. And part of that, or actually all of that is due to the location of this residence. Uh, you can see there that 20-foot buffer and also the parking too. You said 20-foot buffer goes right through the existing residence, so it's impossible to have an actual 20-foot buffer. One of the, the concerns though with any type of, you know, having a business next to a residential is light and noise. And that, that can be, you know, the light can be passed a typical time, um, or, or more than is typical, uh, for a residence. So we have a condition regarding that, requiring a photometric plan to reason one for cantiless of the property line. We require prior to site plan approval, that includes staff recommendation.
Motion for approval or denial?
So it's, so it's out of public care area, so you have to reopen.
Public care area, okay.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry, um, as Mr. Butler said, most of this is a result of the position of the locate, of the existing structure. A little closer to the street than it should be, a little closer to the neighbor than it should be. But, um, again, as I stated, we're very conscious about the neighbor, about the neighbors. Um, and again, uh, we've got minimums here that we have to meet. They are more than willing and, uh, may even on their own, um, exceed those standards as far as the fencing and the scrubbery. Uh, I was just asking her about the lighting at night, uh, the lighting in the back of the, or, or would be strictly censored. So o- only if something's back there would the light come on anyway. But as far as no, a light pollution, would not expect that to be a problem, but, you know, if a squirrel or something sets it off, we want the buffers to protect them from the light. And plus, nobody wants to look at a parking lot.
I have a que- I.
Yes, sir.
Don't know if I can do this or not, but I'm gonna ask it anyway.
You want to know what pavers are, I have no idea.
No, I, I know what pavers are, I looked them up.
I looked them up too.
I, I had to look them up and they're actually pretty cool. I want, I want somebody's word, I'm gonna go back there and look to make sure that that, that whatever they put up in there is a buffer. Um, I just want your word on that, that, that buffer.
Yes, sir. That, that, I assure you that, that is their intention. Um, and, you know, the county has authority to come in and make them do better if they, if you don't think they're right.
Right, so, so James, one of the things that, um, just to kind of peek behind how we do plan review, uh, we, we have Lancy Arttech, Jonathan Williams, who is involved with all of that, he's involved with the, on the front end and also the inspection of it. So it, it will be done correctly. If you're concerned about that and you want to add a, you know, belt and suspenders, you can have a condition that requires them to have conversation with him prior to submit it, or you can even have, uh, requirement to have Lancy Arttech prepare the plan. Add some money for the applicant, but there is the option, just to let you know.
Go agree to that.
I, I, I'm not sure what kind of cost that is, but I suspect they, yeah, they're, again, they're agreeable to anything that's reasonable and that sounds reasonable.
Agree with that, James, I think.
When you made the motion, you need to state it in a motion. Yes.
Thank you.
Not one condition.
Anything, any other questions?
Already have one.
That, that was it.
Thank you.
This. Wait, wait. Come to the microphone.
Yeah, I'll actually, we'll take you get there, so we can get you on.
Are we discussing the variable of lights and squirrels and music and, and, like, what are we discussing? Because the lights doesn't bother me, squirrels don't bother me, they can play music till 10 o'clock, that doesn't bother me.
This is getting a little ridiculous, now get to your point.
The point is, is the, the traffic that they are bringing into my neighborhood.
That's already been discussed and voted. These variables, these are what's written down.
Okay, so what we just discussed was squirrels and that's not an issue?
Variance, the buffer variance, the, the lighting variance, the buffers in where the house is and where the fence.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make it a point that the neighborhood doesn't care about that, we're, we're, we're good with that.
Ma'am, we understand that.
Okay.
Okay, now, if you'd like to make a motion and add that to it.
All right, um, Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA 23 dash zero three dash zero three, variances to section 90 dash 98, 90 dash 139 to reduce the front setback, building setbacks to 53 feet from the center line and to reduce the structural buffer to 10 feet and to add, um.
It kind of depends on how you want to do it. Um, if you want them to have a landscape architect do it, you can say landscape plan shall be prepared by a licensed landscape architect.
Okay, uh, landscape ar- the landscaping must be prepared by a landscape architect.
A second.
At 35, sorry, 35, 35 Stardust Drive. And, and just to clarify, so we're keeping the photometric condition as well? Yes. Okay, just want to make sure we all understand.
Okay, now do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor signify by raising your right hands. If, at this point, if, if the folks with Stardust Drive would like a minute to leave, you're welcome to, or you can stay for the other business. Giving you an opportunity while I'm.
Lancy Artca, so.
Do you have a net?
Yeah. I was trying not to do this one in my face.
And that bit.
Dead net.
Parking.
Oh, Lord heavens. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Mr. Butler.
Lieutenant Sheriff, massage operator's license for Jessica, Jessica Yates, DBA balanced bodywork. She is working out of 3685 Riverwatch Parkway and also has mobile massage services. She meets all requirements of the ordinance, as staff recommends approval.
Uh, Ms. Yates here? Okay, any questions? Like to make a motion for or against this issue?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the massage, massage operator's license for Jessica Yates at 3685 Riverwatch Parkway, Suite 100. Services.
Second, all in favor? Next item on the agenda is, is Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a request for provisional home occupation for cloud construction located at 1905 Smith Crawford Road. Property is located on the northeast side of Smith Crawford Road and is currently zoned RA residential agricultural, as are all of the surrounding properties. The aerial of the site, it is a 16.6 acre, uh, property, as you can see is fairly heavily wooded. Uh, this request was triggered by a change of address, uh, submission for the business license for cloud construction, uh, which clears land for local builders and delivers rock and topsoil to job sites and constructs driveways. Um, some of the trees are brought back to this property after clearing and are used for firewood. Uh, so the business operations on this property include the office located in the house at the rear of the property, um, and the, the laydown area for the trees and some equipment storage. Um, that includes, uh, two dump trucks, trailers and an excavator, um, that are parked on the site as well as that outdoor storage area. Uh, there is a large shop building on the property, but the majority of that is for, uh, personal use and not counted towards the business. So they're, they're not running afoul of the, the 50% of the, the house square footage with, with that. So the, the main issue in this case is the outdoor storage. Uh, there's only one employee other than the business owner, so there's a limited number of vehicle trips. There is a pretty significant outdoor storage areas, you can kind of see on the aerial, but it is quite well buffered from the road and from the neighbors. Uh, so there likely are not any concerns with this business in this location and staff is recommending approval.
Any questions to do with this issue? Like to have a motion for approval or disapproval?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve provisional home occupation for cloud construction at 1905 Smith Crawford Road.
Second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, yes, sir, this is, uh, five applications we received at the same time for the Augusta National Women's Amateur Golf Tournament, taking place out of the Champions Retreat Golf Course. And, uh, they have, uh, a couple additional tents in the neighborhood as well. We received them all at the same time and approved them all at the same time and these presentations are for information only. Um, we'll start with, uh, the tents at the, uh, at, uh, 4945 Hardy McManus Road. That's, uh, Grace Baptist Church, this shows the location of the property. The property zoning, again, it operates as a church, uh, typically. Uh, they've made no changes to the temporary structures, uh, at this site compared to last year. They have a restroom and office trailer and then a tent for the, uh, vehicle loading area. Uh, next we have, uh, the golf, uh, maintenance area where employees of the golf course typically work. They have some temporary structures in here as well. Again, mostly concessions for employees and, uh, restrooms. It's zoned PUD because it's within, the rest of these, uh, structures will be within the, uh, neighborhood of Champions. Uh, and, uh, again, this shows where the concessions and restrooms and different storage pods will be, uh, placed in the, uh, maintenance center of the golf course, uh, during the course of the tournament. Um, again, uh, they also have, uh, security hub where they'll be charging, uh, golf carts and, uh, moving their, you know, different security employees throughout the, the facility. Uh, they're gonna be placed in the middle of this roundabout here, this shows the location north of Champions Parkway. Uh, it's again zoned PUD within the neighborhood and there are no changes to this location either. It's an office trailer and a restroom trailer. Uh, and again, this is kind of the hub for where they're gonna have their security employees predominantly. Um, next again, we have, uh, this is the application for all of the temporary structures that will be on the golf course and in the clubhouse area. Again, this is the golf course, uh, plot. Zone PUD in the neighborhood. And again, the various structures continue to be of a concession or restroom or office nature, including, uh, in, uh, this case, uh, scoreboard towers and boards as well throughout the course. Uh, additionally, again, up in that security hub area, there are a couple spots where they're gonna charge golf cor- uh, golf carts that they'll be using throughout the week. And again, more charging stations, uh, near the clubhouse in that case. Um, and then these are the, again, more security tents, restroom trailers, uh, and, uh, practice tee tent. Um, one of the few minor changes that they've made this year is this TV tower has, uh, gone up in some of its dimensions. It was smaller last year, but it's been increased this time and this is the clubhouse area. And then finally, they have a, uh, security checkpoint at the front of the tournament, uh, that'll be actually on, uh, Riverwood Parkway's right of way. It's a private road though, um, as stated and listed here. This is the location near the roundabout where they'll be placing that security checkpoint tent just for, you know, players and, uh, patrons as they enter onto the premises. Uh, again, this area isn't highlighted as a part of the PUD, but it is a private road maintained by, you know, by the HON within the PUD. Uh, and that shows again the dimensions of the security tent, they haven't changed compared to last year as well. And all of these applications, again, were received and approved at the same time, we approved them on March 8th.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Four Oaks Phase Four, Ms. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a preliminary plat for Phase Four of Four Oaks, not located off Ridesboro Road. This is off Perford Farm Road and is currently zoned R2, single-family residential. Uh, this section includes 32 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 10,123 square feet. Uh, the required setbacks are a minimum of 55 feet from the center line of the roads and 10 feet from the side and rear property lines. Uh, sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of the road since the site was masqueraded and 3.94 acres of open space is provided in this section. Uh, we did approve a variance for. Uh, we did approve a variance for the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer along the eastern property line. Uh, this side has a twenty-five foot buffer with a structural element, uh, fence or a wall that is to be maintained by the HOA, and these requirements are noted on the plat. Uh, the remaining property lines, uh, with the exception of the southern property line that's adjacent to Four Oaks, uh, shall retain the fifty-foot undisturbed buffer and staff is recommending approval.
Anyone here who would like to discuss this issue? Any questions? Have a motion to accept or deny?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat, plat for Four Oaks Phase Four off Hereford Farm Road.
All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Ms. Danielle, the next one.
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for Phase Three of Canton Park located off Riverwatch Parkway and currently zoned AR-ten apartment residential and TR townhouse residential. Is the location of the site on kind of the northeast side of Riverwatch Parkway, adjacent to the existing phases of Canton Park. Uh, you'd say the majority of this section is zoned AR-ten, uh, that comes with some additional requirements beyond the, the TR section. So for that AR-ten, uh, zoning, there is a requirement in the county code that the amenity area related to this development must be complete prior to build out the fifty percent of the homes in this section. And the applicant is aware of that requirement and intends to comply with it. Uh, this is the final plat for this section. It is twenty townhouse lots with a minimum lot size of seventeen hundred square feet and an average lot size of eighteen hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, building setbacks are twenty feet from the front property line and ten feet from the rear property line. And since these are townhouse lots, uh, the side setbacks are zero feet. Uh, sidewalks are to be provided and one point eight five acres of open spaces provided in this section, including a forty-foot natural buffer at the perimeter of the site. And this is the existing site. And staff is recommending approval.
Anyone here that would like to discuss this issue? Are there any questions? All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Oh, we got to have a motion.
How about a motion?
I'm jumping ahead of myself. Call myself, see there?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Canton Park Phase Three off Riverwatch.
A second.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, Ms. Montgomery?
Yes, sir, this is a final plat for Section Two of Tillery Park located off Baker Place Road. On sort of the south side of Baker Place Road and is part of the Tillery Park planned residential development. This section includes sixty-two single family residential lots with a minimum lot size of five thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet and an average lot size of six thousand six hundred and eighty-nine square feet. Setbacks are a minimum of fifteen feet from the front property lines on the public roads and ten feet from the front property lines along the private alley. Side setbacks are seven and a half feet for the front loading lots and six feet for lots served by alleys. Rear setbacks are ten feet. This section includes four point one two acres of open space and sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of the road as well as a pedestrian trail along the extension of Canterbury Farms Parkway and the new collector road, Tillery Park Drive. This is a existing view of the site. And there is also a required berm on Baker Place Road. Uh, the zoning conditions for the approval allowing that berm instead of the typical undisturbed buffer, uh, required the berm to be complete and landscaped prior to approval for a final plat for any lots within three hundred feet of the berm. Uh, the berm is, as you can see, constructed and the majority of the landscaping is in place. Uh, the plat will not be released from plan review until all of the landscaping is complete and staff is recommending approval.
Anyone here that would like to discuss this issue with? Questions? Have a motion to accept or deny this issue?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Tillery Park Section Two off Baker Place Road.
Second. All in favor signify with your right hand. Okay, now we get into the public hearings. Ms., Mr. Butler?
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for rezoning from RA to S-one, uh, thirty-two sixty-five Jaclyn Drive for a laydown yard for camper, camper, camper rental business. This location of the property on the east side of Jaclyn Drive, just south intersection of Jaclyn and, and Cobham Road. There's a current zone of the property and everything around it is zoned RA residential agricultural. There's a current aerial of the site. You can see the camper already on the property. Um, the applicants have owned the property since, I believe, twenty seventeen. Um, and this is a, a request that came to us from code enforcement, um, just to provide that clarity on the front end. This is existing site. Also the plat of the property. And the overall development plan. So one of the things with it, um, they have a handful of structures out there. You have sheds and carports, uh, nothing that's really permit permanent, uh, perhaps. There's currently storing about eighteen campers out there. Um, they do plan to put about two hundred feet of, two hundred feet of, uh, fencing along Jaclyn Drive. Uh, we do have a condition to kind of, um, allow for that to be a little bit more fleshed out as we move forward. Uh, that would be with some landscape and they've already said they'll add some. We'd like to kind of have a little bit of collaboration on that. Um, terms of setbacks, they have typical seventy-five foot front setback and also ten, or ten on the sides, but then on the back. They do have a, a reduced one down to ten feet, which is not typical for RA. Uh, there is nothing behind them over here. Nothing can really, or nothing to be impacted by that. So staff is comfortable with that reduction, uh, from what would normally be seen in RA. One of the things with this site, if we'll go to the next, uh, slide there. Typically, what we're looking for with something like this is, um, well buffered and, you know, hidden away. And they've accomplished that so far. Again, they've been there for several years without really running afoul of anything. But the other thing that comes into play of this that is, uh, somewhat unique is the soul survey that's shown here. Um, it would be very expensive to put a house on this property that's done residential agricultural. This one, that there is a, a, another aspect to this that kind of says the house of best use is likely what they proposed. Um, it's one of those things that the sites probably doesn't pencil out if you were to try to build a house on it. So it's one that, you know, the, the best use is maybe the storage, uh, facility. Overall, um, in terms of the future, future development map, it is within the rural character area. Um, nothing really says that you can have something like this out there, but we do have examples of, you know, properties have been able to be converted into what amount to a light industrial type use with sufficient buffering. Done that several times throughout the county. Um, due to these factors, staff is recommending approval with conditions. Again, the first one there, uh, proposed fencing and supplementation of the buffer will be completed in six months of approval. And then also we'll consult the county landscape architects, uh, to kind of devise that plan to make sure that it's going to function well, uh, throughout four seasons. That concludes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to discuss this issue for the audience? Or questions?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file RZ twenty-three oh three, oh, dash oh three, rezoning RA to S-one at thirty-two sixty-five Jaclyn Drive.
Second. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, Ms. Mystery, you're the next one.
Yes, sir, this is a major revision to S-one at forty-five sixty-seven Cox Road on point four four acres. Current zoning is S-one and the major revision is to add professional uses. Here's the location opposite, um, Evans High School on Cox Road. The zoning is S-one at the moment. The majority of the residential zoning around there is R-two, single family detached. Um, the adjacent property north is P-one. Um, the three parcels are a P-one. Um, there's also the S-one across Cox Road, which is a church. And there's other P-one, S-one zonings further down Cox Road, which is a salon and a nursery and some other commercial zoning along the, North Bel Air. Here is the, uh, close-up of the aerial. It's an existing, um, building and parking area. And these are some street views that show the existing building. And then the second photo shows the looking southeast where you've got the P-one office building to, the adjacent there. There is the plat. And the applicant included a development plan to show what they, they want to do. So they're keeping the existing building, uh, they're going to remodel and make it look nice. They've got, um, asphalt parking here and gravel parking here, which will have up to three, um, employee cars or trucks. Um, the parking lot in the middle will be crushed asphalt for, um, kind of the public parking. The driveway will be raised to twenty-four feet in width. And the fence on this side will be removed, which is where the septic tank and drain fields are. And that part will be landscaped to make it look, uh, more professional. Uh, the previous zoning, uh, in two thousand and six actually was to P-one zoning. And that was a cabinet shop at the time. And it was done to try and make this area more conforming with the adjacent P-one uses. Um, the S-one zoning was done in twenty thirteen for three businesses that were operating there. Um, house cleaning business, um, cleaning supply store and, um, a tool repair business as well. So the new S-one revision will allow just P-one uses. Um, and the, um, business owner has just two employees on site at the moment. And they want the option to have, um, tenants in the future as well. So they will dress it up and make it look nice as well. These photographs just compare the twenty thirteen, um, photos. The top one on the left is the photo from that file. Um, there was a lot of chain link fencing on the front there that made it look quite industrial. Um, so that zoning on the, uh, S-one did clean up the side a, a bit at that time. Um, and now the, the goal is to make it look a lot more professional. There is an existing wood structure which acted as a sign for this business at one point. It is on the neighbor's property according to the aerial. So the applicant intends to work with them to see if they can actually remove the wooden structure, uh, which is a little bit of an eyesore at the moment, and they want to propose a sign that's more, um, like a decorative post sign, which will be more in keeping with the, with the area. Um, and there's, um, there's a description, the narrative that allows them to, a little bit more flexibly on the location just because of the, the site, um, entrance is quite tight there. Um, the future development map, uh, puts this in the in-town neighborhoods area, which is mostly a higher density residential area. It does allow some civic uses, schools, churches, daycares, that sort of thing. Um, because the existing use is non-residential at the moment, this is in keeping with, um, the character that's already there. So we're, uh, recommending approval through the S, the revision to the S-one to add professional uses. That concludes staff recommendation.
Anyone here that would like to come forward and discuss this issue? Questions? Motion to accept or deny?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ twenty-three four four, major special revision. Property located at forty-five sixty-seven Cox Road.
Second. All in favor? Both? Okay, Mr. Butler?
Lieutenant Sheriff's request for rezoning, um, out on Roundtree Way and Riverwatch Parkway for multiple parcels. Uh, the applicant has requested to postpone this request, uh, so we won't be spending a ton of time on it. Uh, we'll still introduce it and talk about the, the high points. We won't be getting down into the weeds too much with it. Again, the property is currently zoned R-two, request is rezoned to C-two for proposed car wash. This is the case of all the properties on Roundtree Way and also Riverwatch Parkway. And also the current zoning, again, all zoned R-two. Uh, you do have to the north, you had a mixture of planning and development, AR and R-two. And also, also the south across Riverwatch Parkway, you have more R-two. And then to the west, R-two as well. I do have some C-two over here, of course, for, uh, the proposed legal development. Shows the aerial view of the property, again, primarily all residential with some of it being undeveloped currently. Existing sites. Get those quickly, Roundtree, also Roundtree again. Shows the plats of the, of the properties on Roundtree and also the plats on Riverwatch Parkway. So, uh, all I'm asking for the request is for proposed car wash, as a conceptual plan. Uh, there are companion variances and variations to this, uh, to this whole property. Um, one of the things from staff's standpoint is the car wash is, is considered a, a light industrial use or industrial use under our code. Uh, one of the things with the future development map, uh, for this area, which is the Evans Activity Center, it does mention that, um, industrial usage should be more on the, on the edge of that activity, of that activity center. This is practically in the very middle of it. Um, you also have the concern of these properties here not being included within it. Um, it creates, you know, this is absolutely a, becomes a, it's still developable, but it's not really what it could be. Um, these properties over here are now going to be, uh, forever combined. Um, they basically can't function out the other if they were to be developed. Uh, so there are some concerns from staff's standpoint regarding those factors as well as the future, the future development map. This shows the future development map itself, again, activity center, mixed-use activity center within Evans. Again, practically right in the middle of it. Uh, so that is our biggest concern with it. And staff, uh, was recommended approval, but okay, I'm postponing this right April twentieth by applicant to work more on it and also consult with staff. That concludes staff recommendation.
Let's move back to the app, take a please. One that was colored. Show me where the grocery store is going from, um, these.
Right there.
That's what.
Yeah.
Which ones are you talking about there would be?
Everything in between. Yeah, I said.
What's the problem, what's the problem with that?
So it makes it so that those two are basically have to be connected to be developed. It's not a problem per se, but it's one of those that it creates these odd little developable pieces that maybe not, may not be as beneficial as they could be.
I'm not being sarcastic, but I never have understood what our responsibility would be.
So our, our, it's not really much, but at the same time, it's also you don't want to create a problem. That's what you're, what we're also looking at from our side of it. You know, the, the mixed-use activity center anticipates as becoming commercial. It really does. So it's one that you want to make it so it's easy to be developed. Uh, you don't want to create, you know, these properties that maybe can't be combined or maybe are just become dead if they're.
That was the only issue. Would that be something they would turn it down?
Well, I think you saw the question of, of the car wash itself, um, that use being industrial under our code. Now, do they exist in C-two? Absolutely. But when they're being requested to be rezoned to C-two and we know what the use is and we also have a very clear, um, uh, how we want to treat what, what amounts to an industrial property in, in, in an activity center. And that's where we have a, a concern with it. Um, now, again, uh, there's, there are car washes right down the street that are in C-two. Um, this is more of an establishment of a new one, maybe the, the bigger issue.
Your perspective if, if the lot was bought next door to it?
I think if you bought, if we're looking for, you're looking for a, he, here's what the, the minimum threshold is. Is that what you want?
And what would make it more pleasing to the county to approve?
Realistically, the one on the end there on Jamaica Court Love, with the little orange, yellow, or green thing on, goodness. That's the one that really is, would, would need to be acquired.
And those people are the ones that are holding that up.
I would assume so. Um, these two over here, it'd be nice, but that's not a requirement, not in our mind, so.
But I was curious.
Yeah.
Question, answer?
Yeah, I did.
So. So what you got to say about it, Mr. Butler?
All I got.
Anyone here that would like to address this issue for or against? Okay, we need a motion to postpone. Till April the twentieth.
Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file RZ twenty-three dash zero three dash zero five, rezoning from R-dash-two to C-dash-two at four five three nine, four five four three, four five four seven and four five five one Riverwatch Parkway. And five twenty-five, five twenty-seven, five thirty-one and five thirty-three Roundtree Way to the April twentieth Planning Commission.
That covers all three of these, Mr. Butler?
Only covers this one currently, the rezoning.
We're going separately?
Uh, we're, 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 we're moving that way at this point.
Already there. Okay, that's the motion. We got a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand.
All right, next thing is a variance to multiple sections. Look at ninety-nine eighty-eight list lot structure requirements. Ninety-nine one thirty-nine buffers and screening, one forty-seven, H-four B and I-three use provisions. Exceed the maximum building setbacks, reduce structural buffers, allow operation of a car wash and fifty feet residential use. Also allow a drive-through on the properties on Riverwatch and Roundtree Way, which totaled three acres, currently zoned R-two. This is the location of the properties. Also the current zoning. Aerial view of the site, existing site, uh, Roundtree, also the plats for Roundtree and the ones for, uh, Riverwatch Parkway. So what we're dealing with, um, if this were to be rezoned to C-two, you would have a maximum setback from Riverwatch Parkway and also Roundtree Way. Um, they can meet the maximum setback on Riverwatch, but they cannot meet on Roundtree. You can see it right here. Um, you'd have to get a pretty interesting ability to make it work, uh, to be able to meet both those setbacks. Again, they got lots of issues with this site on, with it being on a corner. Um, it's very hard to meet two max setbacks on, with two roads. Uh, we waive this all the time. Um, certainly no concerns on that. But again, we are recommending disapproval of the, of the rezoning. Certainly no concerns on that, but again, we are recommending disapproval of the rezoning. So we're kind of in the same boat with that. So for the buffer itself, so you have two different things. You have a reduction on this side from, actually on both these sides, from 30 feet down to 10 feet. And you also have the buffer requirement for a car wash of a 50-foot separation from property line to property line for a car wash to a residential property. And you have the all three of those, can't meet that requirement. Again, we have one last meeting. No real concerns with that either. And in terms of the drive-through, what we're talking about is really this area here. Not really any way to get around having the drive-through somewhere where it's going to be essentially between the, between the road and all that. So also something you can't really get around. Overall, again, we are still recommending disapproval of the rezonings. We're recommending, we're recommending disapproval of the request, but also they requested postponed to April 20th. That concludes staff recommendation.
Okay, now, any motion for this one's April the 20th?
Mr. Chairman, no public hearing, or no public.
Well, we've asked a minute ago, but I'll ask again. Does anybody want to talk about this issue to us? All right, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA 23-03-06, variance to Section 90-98, 90-139, 90-147, H4B, and 90-147I3. To exceed the maximum building setbacks, reduce structural buffers, allow operation of a car wash within 50 feet of a residential use, and allow a drive-through on property at 4539, 4543, 4547, and 4551 Riverwatch Parkway. And 525, 527, 531, and 533 Roundtree Way to the April 20th Planning Commission meetings.
Second.
All in favor, signify with a raise your right hand. Now let's go through this motion one more time, Mr.
We talked. The variation is a sort of roll-up door face right away to exceed glazing percentage on the properties of what we've been talking about. Let's go ahead and go to the elevations. So really no concerns with the roll-up doors. There's really no getting around having these doors face one of these roads. So no concern there. Special elevation looks quite nice for a car wash. They may exceed the glazing percentage. We're not 100% on that, so we have included that as a, something that could be on there. Again, in keeping with the theme, we are recommending disapproval of this variation. But again, they have a request to postpone to April 20th.
Mr. Jackson, you want? Do we have anybody who would like to discuss this issue? Thank you very much. Now.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to postpone file VA 23-03-07, variation to Section 90-96, C1 and C5, Evans Town Center Overlaid District, to permit roll-up doors to face a right-of-way and to exceed the glazing maximum on property at 4539, 4543, 4547, and 4551 Riverwatch Parkway. And 525, 527, 531, and 533 Roundtree Way to the April 20th Planning Commission meetings.
Second.
All signify with your right hand. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Okay, the next item is Mr. Douglas.
Yes, sir, this is a parcel at 6001 Horizon West Parkway. It's about a four-and-a-half acre property currently zoned M2. They're seeking to install an outdoor storage area that would then trigger the necessity for a buffer at the edge of their property line, at their property line abutting a church that is adjacent to them. This shows the location of the property, southwest of the intersection of Horizon West Parkway and Horizon South Parkway. This shows the zoning again. It's in an area that is mostly our M2 general industrial zoning district, except the property immediately south of them, which houses the Warren Baptist Grove Town campus. This is an aerial of the property, and again, they're seeking to install an outdoor storage area south of the building here in this grass field. They would resurface that as a gravel lot. And again, that would trigger the necessity for buffering along that southern property line that you can see there. This is the existing site as seen from Horizon South Parkway. And then this is an existing photo from the backside of the building. This shows the grass field where they'd be looking to install that outdoor storage. And so you're looking south in this photo, and the building that you might be able to see through the trees, hopefully, is the upper portions of the building that are the Warren Baptist Church to the south of the property as illustrated previously. This is a plat of the property. And then this is the proposed site plan. Again, so what we're looking at is the property to, okay, yeah, so the, this area out here is where they're looking to install the outdoor storage area. Again, they would resurface that with gravel. At that point, they would be required buffering over here along this property line. Instead, they are asking to install the retention pond and an emergency access easement here to run from their property to the Warren Baptist property, as opposed to a landscape buffer that would inhabit that area. Part of that is to maintain the size of their outdoor storage. They, you know, say that it's desperately needed. Additionally, that access would allow both churchgoers from Warren Baptist and employees of this business access to Horizon South Parkway through each of their properties, which would be mutually beneficial. Warren Baptist did also submit a signed approval letter stating that they're on board with the granting of this variance. Additionally, what is helpful, as you saw in that previous site photo, is that this property is uphill from Warren Baptist. And so the churchgoers on the weekends wouldn't be looking into that storage area. Also, the variance would only be granting a variance to the landscape portion of that buffer. The lining of the storage area that you're seeing would still be a six-foot chain link fence with screening installed as well to include the gates for that access easement. And yes, that concludes staff recommendation. We're recommending approval of this variance.
Questions?
Questions from the floor?
Don't complicate it.
I'm going to charge him by the minute.
I just thought y'all might be getting lonely up here. My name's Mark Ivy. I'll just be able to answer any questions y'all may have.
Hey, Mark.
Good to see y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve file VA 23-03-04, variance to permit urgency access and detention pond within the buffer against tax map, 069 parcel, 01F, 1001 Horizon West Parkway.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, see if I have a raise your right hand. Next item, Mrs. Montgomery.
Yes, sir, this is a request for variance to Section 90-53, list of lot and structure requirements at 3724 Postel Lane. This property is located on the north side of Lakeside Drive in the Winfield Hills subdivision and is currently zoned R4 recreational residential, as are all of the surrounding properties. The property to the rear is owned by the Corps of Engineers as part of the property surrounding the lake. Shows the aerial of the site. You can see the parcel itself is not rectangular at all, and the property lines are not perpendicular to the road. This is an older development. It was plotted back in the 1960s prior to our current zoning requirements. We would not typically allow lots shaped like this today. So it does not meet the typical shape. It also is smaller than would typically be required for the R4 zoning district. So it is very much a non-conforming lot in that regard. You can also see from the aerial that the house is quite close to the existing property lines, so we are dealing with the existing house not meeting setbacks. This shows the existing site, and this is the property line marker. There's another one in front of that tree back there. You can see the houses are very close together here. Typically, there would be a 10-foot side setback requirement, so these houses should, in theory, be 20 feet apart to meet the zoning, and obviously, they are not in the existing conditions. So this is the esprit of the property. You can see the existing house currently sits just over four feet from the side property line there, and there is a small corner of the house that crosses onto the core property at the rear of the site. The core is handling that encroachment separately from this variance. They were included on this review, and they don't have any concerns with the variance itself. And we're going to reach out to the property owner regarding that encroachment. So the reason for this request is they are proposing an addition of an additional garage on the front of the house. This is expanding the non-conforming structure, so it does require a variance to get the site into conformance, since the house does not quite parallel the property line. Adding the garage on does bring the front corner of the garage even closer to the property line at about 2.96 feet from that line. So the requested reduction is to a side setback of two feet, gives them about a foot of leeway in the construction there. No particular concerns with this. I mean, it's very common for houses at the lake to be pushed to the back of lots, to be closer to the side property lines. This is an older plat and an older development, likely been this way for quite some time. So staff is recommending approval with the condition that due to the short distance to the property line, Section R302 fire-resistant construction of the IRC requires that garage wall to be a one-hour rated wall with no overhang or openings. And that is from our Building Standards Department. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Anybody like to discuss this from the audience? Any questions?
Motion to approve with condition file VA 23-03-05, variance to reduce the side setbacks to, in the rear setback to zero feet at 3724 Postel Lane.
Second. All in favor? This concludes our business for today. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody raise your right hand. A commission. Let's boogie week.
Yeah, how'd you get?